This building sits on traditional whole lands with the four bands of the Spokane tribal Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and eventually the Band. Since time immemorial, Spokane tribe of Indians have lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flush eaters. We pay our respects to their elders, perhaps present and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples through fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. And we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of Spokane tribe and all those who share this. All right. Any proposed, oh, had any visitors? We have sign up sheets at the door to show you attended and also sign up. And are there any changes required to be added to the agenda? Consider that adopted. And first order of action is approval of the June 2022 board. Nice second. I just moved in seconded, all in favor. Hi, hi. All right. Next item is the approval of the June 2022 bills of contributions. I think that we approved the those contributions in the amount of six hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty cents. So moving seconded, all in favor. Hi. All right. Motion passes. And now we have our financial report.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, so for the library operations portion for June 2022, we closed during the month, we closed the month of June, sorry, with the ability to pay one hundred and sixty-nine days of operating costs. That's about one point eight days compared to last month. And for the financial trend, our June expenditures were seven hundred and forty-four thousand fifty-seven dollars. And seventy-one percent of that amount or five hundred and twenty-four eight forty-nine was for personnel costs. We spent a total of fifty-one thousand six one six on books and materials. I want things to note, we did bring all of our barcoding in-house, so we are seeing some cost savings on all books and materials costs with that as well. We spent ten thousand three forty-two on minor equipment, interfund charges were eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We had our summer reading magazine invoices come in and that total was twelve thousand and twenty-six. Also eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars was spent for our final lease payment at the S T A Plaza. We are currently on on track with getting fully vacated from that location by the end of this month. And then for business office news, over the past couple of months, we have worked with the city treasury to establish an adequate avenue to accept online payments. That's with our partner, Communico, so they're going to be hosting our online room booking software. So when patrons utilize that for commercial use only, they can they can book and pay for that. And also, we're getting close to finalizing the 2023 budget. So last year, the budget was presented to the board for approval in September. The city does have an accelerated schedule this year. They are hoping to adopt in September with their board. And that that might be subject to change. So this year, we are aiming to present the 2023 budget for approval during the August meeting next month. Forward to that. I would like to open now for any questions before we pass over to Penny with what.
The finance committee.
Thursday, Thursday, the twenty-first. What time is that? I just want to make sure.
Double check for you.
There it is, eleven fifteen to twelve fifteen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was just gonna mention that usually traditionally we don't have as much footage of going to this year. And that's subject to change with the city. It's kind of at also on the summer reading magazine.
Yeah.
Didn't the friends?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
They cover all of it or most?
No, most of it, about five, fifty-two hundred.
So, oh, actually, I have a question or a comment you were making about doing all the barcoding in-house now.
Yeah.
So there was a period of time, a number of years ago, where, as my understanding is, that a bunch of the first floor space, part of what that was originally used for was processing materials. And we outsource that now, so essentially we've become so efficient.
That's that's my understanding. As far as the use of that space for barcoding, I don't know what footage and how that that operates, but it must be more efficient.
There is some real, you know, great processes to really shrink down the time it takes to do that. But we were using, it just wasn't leading our criteria.
All right, any other questions?
Good evening. Before I dive into this bond report, I want to first of all, thank Lorraine Mead and also Dean Gable and Mary Valdez. They, you know, as we all know, Matt retired and they just have not missed a beat. And we really appreciate the hard work that that we get from them. Thank you, Lorraine. June was very active. We've been very busy placing furniture orders and shelving orders for Indian Trail and South Hill. We processed seventeen purchase orders so far, primarily for our public furniture and our metal shelving. That's totaling right now about eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. What we are seeing, though, for the first time, the shelving came in with some steel surcharges and they were pretty hefty. We didn't have those on our phase one orders. And as of yesterday's steel case, which is on the public floor, but a lot in our staff area, which we have not ordered yet. As of yesterday, those that had a price increase plus a two percent fuel surcharge. So we're seeing these costs come in higher. We have custom casework and staff furniture to order. I hope we'll have all that placed in July. That's going to give us a good indicator of where we're going to land. But here's the good news. Phase one furniture came in under budget. So we've been very fortunate in a period of uncertainty with our COVID and long lead items. So our two smallest projects, we are still operating within our overall project furniture and shelving budgets and within our board approved maximum. So all good news so far. In regard to fixed assets, we are still doing the manual Excel upload worksheets. Hoping to see that, I might retire before they get that automated. I'm coming to decide. But in July eleventh, big day for us. As you know, Central Library opened, so we are gearing up for our most challenging manual upload because we will go back in time to all of our purchases, all the way back to 2019, and bring all of these items individually tagged now into service. And that encompasses serial numbers and all kinds of information. So when I talk to you next month in August, I hope to be feeling really happy that that's behind us because it should be smooth sailing after that. And lastly, as Nicole mentioned, June was a busy month on the 2023 budget. But we're ready to present that to finance committee this week and talk about it at the board in August. And there were no contracts or executed under our special authority. So that wraps up my report and I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Now we have the bond construction project update.
Thank you. We have had a busy month, as Penny has said. Liberty and Hive continue for closeout. And believe it or not, we're actually going to finally finally get certificate or occupancy for the Hive branch probably tomorrow. So that's very good news. So those are closing out. And we're continuing construction for both Indian Trail and South Hill. Downtown, as Penny said, we it got substantial, or it got certificate of occupancy on the eighth of July, so a few days before opening. And it opened and there are still a few furniture tweaks that need to be done and a few long lead A V items that need to be done, but we're getting there. Indian Trail, they are continuing to do electrical, dry, finish drywall, they're painting. They've got their main mechanical equipment. It's being hooked up in the yard. The roofing and the gutters are all done. The monument sign is poured, so it's coming along quite well, as is South Hill. They are finishing again, doing some last minute drywall, doing painting, working on the electrical room, tiling the restrooms, and working on new doors for the chilling yard. So both of them are going well. And in the board packet, you will see some pictures of the grand opening at Central and then a few construction pictures, both from Indian Trail and South Hill. Does anybody have any questions for me?
So I can't recall what our timeframe is, but we're expecting the two last two branches to open.
Right now, we have tentative openings about the end of the year, beginning of next year. We do still have some furniture to order, so we'll need to make, figure out when that's coming in to finalize dates. But end of the year, beginning of next year.
Thank you, that's that's the question I keep getting.
And I understand. We think South Hill's been a little bit worse.
Oh, yes.
So maybe for the end of the year for South Hill, possibly, if everything.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, and the next agenda item is the chairman's report. So now we move on to the library, city director.
All right, well, we can't say this enough, but huge congratulations to the organization for the successful opening of Central on July eleventh. A lot of hands went to that day. Facilities, I T, the search staff, getting everything going to the amazing of the public as they walked through the doors, feeling that civic pride was, I hope, well worth it. It was great to see people get all giddy as they were coming through just not knowing what to expect, but obviously being very happy with what they're seeing. So really a big milestone for us. We had over twenty-five hundred people come through the door that day. Rest of the week wasn't a slacker. It's been really consistent and now we're starting to see the computer usage go up as the word's getting out for that access. And we're just so happy to be here. And thank you all for being there on opening day. It was a really celebratory day. And thank you to our marketing and communications team for planning that day for us. So we're starting to pick up the big programs at Central Library too. So last Wednesday, we hosted a homelessness and housing conversation, co-hosting with Eastern Washington and the city of Spokane. That got some publicity and spokesman as well as the news channels about what the data is really telling us. Also, Spokane comedian Ryan McComb will be recording his debut comedy special live at the Central Library on Friday, this Friday night, at nine to eleven. So that should be pretty cool, be there. July twenty-eighth from eight to ten, we've got Chef Ricky Webster, Spark Central Executive Director, Ruth Matson, comedian Harry D Riley, and musical actor Ari Guarini. That day, as always, beer on some canned beverages from Tri-Play as well. So it's great to have that energy back from the Central Library. Our star of the month went to Minnie Paul for her work in asset tracking. So as Penny had mentioned previously, it's been a bear for us to be doing that by hand. And she has just done it with such a positive attitude. And we can't wait until for ease of use, but she's been great, great commitment to detail and great commitment to the organization. We also had a visit from Mid-Columbia Libraries yesterday. So we toured them around some of our sites. They are interested in looking at replicating the relationship that we built with Spokane Public Schools. So word is getting out probably more quickly for them because Dr. Redinger was the superintendent at Spokane is now in their area. So she had a positive experience with that and looking to create some of that same community momentum that are. Yeah, it's always great to visit the other systems and be able to show what we've been doing. Huge, huge focus on hiring. So in the director's report, you'll see a long list of new staff. So welcome to Mason and Charles and Craig, Tina, Alyssa, Alyssa Bailey and Alejandra as they're joining the organization. We'll have more to mention in the next report as well. But Alan and the managers have really been busy in recruiting and hiring as we're opening up Central and filling those positions. And finally, it seems like it's taken longer than it should. But we did receive a clear title for the Central Library land and the land at the Hive. So we just received that yesterday. Last week.
Sunday.
So that process is done and we're here so officially. Any questions for me?
All right, thank you. And now we have the communications report.
So Amanda's out today, so I'll be giving the report. A few highlights from June and, you know, kind of going into July as well with Central opening. We finalized the collection and wayfinding signs for Central. You'll be able to see on each floor and right outside each elevator, the wayfinding signs that help people get to where they are looking to go. We did interior photo shoots at Central Library and Liberty Park Library with Inside Spokane. The pictures look amazing. We already got them back and they also did a video of Central for us. And I think Liberty Park as well. I just haven't looked at it necessarily as much, but it, amazing work. And you'll see that throughout our website in the coming months. We, and then, of course, we planned and coordinated Central Library grand opening event. All of the stats that you see for social media in the packet are from June. So I'll be very curious to see what the social media stats and YouTube and everything, what those are like for July. Because I have a feeling they're going to be really engaging and we're going to see an uptick in a lot of those stats. But for June, one of the biggest highlights for all of our social media platforms was Pride Month. When we, a few of us that volunteered at the Pride Festival in mid-June, we posted about that, had a great time. And people absolutely loved it. And then for email marketing, we had, you'll see all of the different stats that we had. And one of the things that I wanted to bring out, just as a highlight, is that our recommended reads that we recently launched earlier this year is our second most popular email that is being read every month. So that's pretty exciting to know that we're getting already a lot of traction with recommended reads. And then finally, for Central grand opening, we were so excited to see that we got about fourteen, we got about fourteen, like, earned media opportunities, whether that be an article or news coverage on TV. So we were really excited to really hype up Central opening and highlight all of the amazing opportunities that it has for communities. So other than that, a few other grand reopening highlights from Central opening. Like Andrew said, we welcomed about twenty-five hundred people into Central Library on Monday alone. We had seventy-eight children and adults attend our storytimes that day. And then we had a hundred and twenty-seven social service needs surveys were collected from people who came to the library that day. And since we've collected about over about four hundred in the time since we've been open and that's just to better understand what our social service needs are and what the community members are really wanting to see here. And then a hundred and four new library cardholders were joined us on Monday, the eleventh. That's across all branches, but Central definitely saw an uptick, I'm sure, because that's already about eighteen point five percent of our total new cardholders to date on July eleventh. So any questions about the communications report? Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And now, on the music introduction overview presentation.
I'm not going to pull up the stuff. I'm not going to tell you. You're not the man being.
Thanks.
You're so welcome.
So first off, thanks for having me, I really appreciate it. Following is just an overview of what I've done over the past several years and what I'll be doing in the future and the present. Since I organized this presentation. So music education serves values put forward in the library's mission statement, specifically that means education, collaboration, and diversity. I'm going to show you what that looks like. I provide lessons on instruments that you see up there. Try to be well-rounded, so we have a pretty good offering in that department. I've led workshops about songwriting and music technology. And in the future, I anticipate doing the same for audio engineering. I provide internship opportunities at Spokane Falls Community College in the audio engineering program. Where I am now sitting as the chair of the board for their advisory committee. I do that through live events and concerts. And during the pandemic, I put together projects for students to edit and mix remotely when there was an extremely limited number of opportunities available to requisition internship hours for graduation. So that was probably one of the bright spots for me personally during the pandemic when there was so much going on. Felt like, well, what can I get? That was something very tangible that I feel like made a difference. Moving forward, we're going to provide some more hands-on studio experience. So it's not just going to be the live events that we put on, but actual in-studio experience. Now, over the past few years, I've recorded concerts and events for posterity with the intention of making them accessible at some point in the future. And now that time is nearly upon us. So this is an archive of recordings that will become available in coming months with a new platform that I'll also discuss later on called Music Cap. In addition, I've laid groundwork for preserving Spokane's music history in the form of a local wiki site that will live online. So that wiki site is exclusively dedicated to local musicians. It said the infrastructure is in place and it will be open to the public because we are going to crowdsource that history. Simply put, one person cannot tell the story of all those who have enriched our community with their musical gifts. So this will be a living, breathing endeavor for years to come. And my aim is to document the history of every musician that has ever played in the symphony as well as independent bands and solo artists for contemporary styles of music. And I should mention that there's a lovely book about the Spokane Symphony that is cited on the site. So as far as collaboration and diversity, I facilitated quite a few events and spiritually, as previously mentioned, I've recorded many of that. So following up on the board there is just a selection of some that SPL has put on or partnered to produce through community organizations. One on the list there, which is Girls Rock Lab, is actually happening right now in this room, as we can see. Feel free to pick up an instrument and have that if you'd like. Now, with regards to partners, I've worked with K S P S, K P B X, Catholic Charities, downtown Spokane Partnership, Spark Central, the Spokane City Future Song Foundation, which is a nonprofit where I was able to secure a grant for some of my students when I first got the job. I just realized that on the piano specifically, they were accelerating pretty quick. It's our range to have them have continuing lessons through that program. It was a huge gift for those boys. And as well, S L C C, which I mentioned. Now, Central Branch downtown offers a music recording studio and there are three tiers of service, which I want to elaborate on. However, before we get there, I want to talk about production studio, which we sort of nicknamed Podcast Studio. This room can be used in a variety of ways. Next slide. Thank you. So the production or podcasting room, this room, said, using a variety of ways, whether a person's looking to create the next hit podcast or simply interview their loved ones for posterity, it's a flexible location that can accommodate whatever the public wants. In addition, we're going to be using that space with K Y R S and they'll utilize it for some of their pre-production needs. Now, for the recording studio, the first tier of service I want to talk about is self-record. We wanted to make this as accessible as possible, so we have a self-record station. You sit down at the station, you have access to acoustic guitar, electric guitar, an electric bass, ukulele, two microphones, a synthesizer, which is hooked into the keyboard, which essentially gives you any sound you could imagine. You open the computer, it turns on, you click on the template, ready to go. The cool thing about that studio space though as well is that you don't have to record. You can simply use that as a rehearsal space if you want. And as a former musician that lived in Seattle, I can tell you that renting a space to rehearse can be cost prohibitive and you have to make decisions of what your priorities are, right? So access really does matter. So I think this space hopefully will allow people without the means to really leverage their creativity and move forward with it. Now, for the second tier of service, we call it Book an Engineer. You book an audio engineer. It's me. So you book me out for four hours at a time and I can help you get a professional sounding quality demo of your music. Now, this is important because local musicians can use those recordings in a number of different ways. You can use those demos to solicit local bars, restaurants, breweries to get shows, paying shows, I should say. You can take those recordings, sell your music online through a number of digital platforms, or you could make CDs or any number of physical mediums there. Or you can take your session files elsewhere, they can be remixed by another audio engineer if they want. Now, the third tier of service, we're pretty excited about, this is a service training. So musicians in the community can apply for this process where you get essentially forty hours of recording time. And we try to record as much as we can. So whether that's a smaller E P or a full-length record, we'll get as much done as we can. Recently had a band in the studio for opening week. All of that is done, being recorded, and now it moves on to the mixing phase, which I'll probably get to next week. So in exchange for that recording time, what we ask for, what we ask for Well, we ask for donation to the library as far as their time is involved, right? So that can take the form of teaching classes or workshops. It doesn't have to just be music. One of the examples that we often use is homebrew. I don't know why that comes to mind, but if they're an expert or have some experience in homebrew, they can do a workshop for the public. It could be showing books. It could be donating time up at Shadle in the garden. So we just want to find what people are good at or what they're passionate about and have them donate some of their time to the community. So this is, I'm really excited for this. I love being in the studio with bands. And the first, the first session out the gate really did turn out pretty well. It's obviously not finalized, but we had some phenomenal musicians in the studio and I can't wait to get it next and show everybody. So now we're going to talk about the online music platform. This is Music Act, which we call Lilac City Live. This is provided by a company called Ravel. It's a user-friendly online platform that enhances our ability to support local artists, much in the way that we empower visual artists at the Hive. We're going to do that for musicians. Again, we call it Lilac City Records. Musicians with previously recorded albums can submit to have their music selected. And if chosen, they'll receive a licensing fee, which is cost-effective for us. And it's also much more compensatory than some of the big digital online music platforms. Well, I don't think they can say, but you know which ones they are. They don't pay very well, so we can be quite competitive in that form. This platform will also house the aforementioned archive concerts and events that I've been recording over the past few years. With its first Fridays to Lilac City Live performances. Now, the music we produce is part of our tier-three service trade as well with this platform. That's part of the agreement that artists enter into before they record. A neat thing about this platform is that it's not just music. It also will include old concert posters, indie music scenes that often kind of get lost to time. There are a number of public libraries that already have that feature, but I think it's one that we would be well-served to utilize. This is what that platform will look like. This is Edmonton Public Library's version. They call it Capital City Records. You can see it, it's highly customizable. They've got albums, artists, videos, playlists. Ours will have the same level of functionality. That's a lot of talking, so I think that's a good place to end it. Are there any questions or concerns that I can answer?
So I wanted to, did you say that, so a local musician has albums already, they can apply to have their albums loaded, so it's available on music? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Exactly, yeah. Yes, Seattle Public has, I think upwards of, I think they have about five hundred albums from local artists. So it's scalable. We have our operating budget because this platform is replacing what we previously had in three years. So we're applying that budget to this new platform that is going to be, rather than giving people access to more national access, it's going to be hybrid.
I have a whole bunch of questions. First one, you've already answered, which is, can we play with that stuff after the meeting?
Yeah.
If you, we give lessons in piano, guitar, bass, drum, ukulele, drums. Are you giving all those lessons?
I am.
Wow, you know how to do all those things. That's impressive.
Yes. I mean, thank you, sir.
Well, the other thing impressive is that I've been up there and seen this, it's like very complicated, you know, soundboards. And I, I, I got the fact that you, they can basically rent you for four hours to run that. But for instance, on the podcast studio, I mean, it, it sounds kind of intimidating for people to walk in to this complicated studio and figure out how to do their podcasts. Does somebody help them with that too, for instance?
I think at first, we're going to be, I'm going to try to be more available if people run into issues. I've tried my best to make sure that everything is as easy for people that don't have experience with that sort of technology. So just like the record station, the self-record station in the music recording studio, you open up the laptop, it turns on. You click on a template and you're up and running. It also comes with instructions. There's a PDF on the computer. We've got some laminated instructions. So it'll take a little bit of time for people to make sure that they're hitting all the steps. But that was a big influence in how we set up the rooms to be bookable. So for the self-record station, that's available only in two-hour windows. That way you're not having to rush through and feeling like all of your time is wasted just simply trying to do the basic things. So you've got a two-hour block there and the production studio will be bookable in two-hour blocks as well. Yeah, yeah, down the road, anticipate the bell, we're going to do that.
And not, not just podcasting, but just recording, you know, because there's the self-reporting too. And it, I mean, I can just see people getting, you know, sort of lost in that a little bit. And I just want to make sure that somebody can help them through the process.
We're looking forward to kind of.
The word trustees just wanted to hear. Are we going to have the, we're going to be able to name the band? Do they have a vote on it?
So I was speaking for the Ira family again, which is my family. All right, excellent. Thank you very much, Amanda. Are there any other agenda items we need to address that aren't here? All right, and are there, is anyone signed up for public comments?
Yeah, we do.
I wanted to talk about hours down here a little bit on that. Nineteen ninety-three, I started as a genealogy helper. That was actually across the street because it was just a big hole in the ground. Here was a bunch of archaeologists down there digging through the remains of the eighteen eighty-nine fire that's under our, this year. Nineteen ninety-eight, I switched on that. Well, I started out as a genealogy helper. I was there every other Thursday from six till nine in the evenings when the library was open. And in nineteen ninety-eight, I switched to being, doing research for others, where I did research for people that wrote in either by email or by snail mail on that. And I was really slow at first, so I was down here probably three nights a week till nine o'clock at night, working on, looking at stuff on that. And because after I got off of work, getting down here by six-thirty, it was usually about zero that I could get here on that. Because I live way up north. And so getting here by six-thirty was pretty easy on that, until nine o'clock, working on that. In the year two thousand, the library started having budget cuts and they started cutting down hours. And so I started coming to the board meetings and to see what they were doing to the hours. Why are they killing my hours at evening? I need more research time. And now you're closing at seven o'clock at night. I'm retired now, so I can come during the daytime now. But a working person can't come and get here very early. And closing at nine o'clock at night is really bad, I think. So.
Closing at seven, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what you're doing. They're closing here at seven o'clock at night. You go up to, if you're a working person, you get off work, get home at six-thirty, get down here at six-thirty and you close it up at seven? You hardly opened a book upstairs by seven o'clock.
What are the, what are our hours in the other branches?
It's the same hours throughout the city.
But there's one, there's only one place that has genealogy research, it's down here. You can't go to any of the like, any of the branches to do it. You gotta be down here, so.
And we, and we did base those on Catholic counts prior years. So that eight to nine, that seven to eight, really didn't see that. You said, but it's something that we keep an eye on and getting those customer comments, you know, that we can adjust the hours.
I'll just chime in there. They're looking to transfer the genealogy up to Shadle instead of Central just because our genealogists like to move there better.
For our hours previously, we have, we had a couple of days where we had late hours, correct?
Yeah, so let me recall, downtown, Central Library was not open on Sundays. And then we were open till eight, eight o'clock, two days a week. So now we're open four days a week until seven. And, you know, as we go back when we're passing, we really wanted to get hours that were consistent throughout this. When we brought this to the board, but obviously, you know, we'll continue to monitor and see what we can do.
Well, and also we have, what about the self-service hours?
Right, and those, we're looking to possibly grow those in the future.
Would self-service work here at this branch?
It's going to be more difficult to manage, but it's, and it's not something that we're ready to do right away. We really want to sit in this building and see how it goes. And the genealogy too, specifically, a lot of those resources. That's where those resources are going. Granted, some of those you need to be in a library facility to access. It's just based on a licensing, but we can continue to monitor.
How is the self-service model working so far? For that, I, these are tall on, oh, we've been basically here, we bought by once and we have two people in each working station the first week. It's actually quite calm. We also are adjusting our security staff to be here arriving at ten, eleven, fifteen, nine. So from nine to ten, it's self-service. And we've been posting the signs the last few days, very, very vivid from the day before, the days that we opened. We don't have, we've not had any incidents for this first week. Oh, that, that's at this branch?
At this one.
Oh, and how's it working at the other branch you've been at? Very calm. I mean, there was a learning experience, remember, we talked about that in the past, where about a two-and-a-half month window, which people did have to adjust. They kind of learned and trained themselves in the branch, but right now it's pretty calm at all. Well, let me ask this, Charles. If we had either here or at Shadle, wherever the genealogy stuff, if, if there was self-service hours extended, would that be workable for genealogy?
Probably. I don't know. I'm not sure what hours we're going to have up here. She still isn't really sure what hours we're going to have up there for, for the Northwest Room on that there. Asking for, why don't we start there right now?
Right, right now it's open. It's, I mean, it's definitely, we're open at four hours a day.
You mean the genealogy or?
No.
Really fast too. Hi, I'm the archivist and such a collection manager and that's a new Northwest Room. And, and right now, yes, we're still doing kind of, we're encouraging people to make appointments, which you can do online. But I've also been staffing the room from nine to four every day for walk-ins. And the genealogy collection currently is in that room available. So people are welcome to reach out to me if there are any questions kind of in that room.
So we did move genealogy into the special quarters.
That's where we're right now.
But you do bring up a good point for looking people, working families, that, that can be pretty short when they're out of work. I know that we've got some weekend gathers to that, perhaps, and all of that. All right, anything online? Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August sixteenth, here at the Central Library. And we don't have an executive session today. So with that, we are adjourned at.